Good evening, I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Today is April 9th, 2012, and we are meeting at the Fordice Building. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lysy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adopt the minutes for March 5th, 12th, 13th, 19th, and 26th.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Sudar. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, are there any additions, revisions, or deletions?
Uh, there is one deletion. It will be item number 13, memorandum of understanding regarding collaboration.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Mr. Smith, do you have a legislative liaison report?
Uh, yes, I do, Madam President. I want to report, I went down to the state legislative conference Wednesday, March 28th. Again, today is Monday, April 9th. The first thing that should be shared with the community is the Ohio House, the Ohio Senate, are currently on their two-week spring break, and they will return April 17th. That being said, so there's been some things that have been proposed, specifically in the budget correction bill, which is House Bill 487. And the budget cor- the midterm budget revision bill has an awful lot of education provisions in it, and actually doesn't have a lot of budget provisions in it at all, and there's some debate as to whether or not it has any budget provisions in it at all. And we got to hear from State Senator Peggy Lerner, who represents the suburban Dayton community. She is the Senate Education Committee Chairwoman. And one of the- and the bill, the budget correction bill, is more than 2,700 pages long. And, you know, that becomes the challenge, is with all the educational provisions that are in it, along with all the provisions in it in total, the perception that I got from listening to the Senate Education Chairwoman, again Peggy Lerner, was that the Governor's Office wanted this all approved fairly quickly, and the state legislature probably wasn't going to have any of that. And again, what the interesting thing is, obviously, the Ohio House is controlled by the Republicans, and the Ohio Senate is controlled by the Republicans. It's just there's so many educational provisions in this. Now, if it was a budget correction bill, there would be some impetus to try to get this done fairly quickly, but because there doesn't seem to be many, if at all, budget provisions in it, the pushback from the legislature is that they're happy to kind of review what the Governor has proposed, but it's not going to happen anytime soon. And one of those things would be to replace the current academic performance rating system for school districts and school buildings with a new grading system for school report cards, such as things like, rather than the current excellent with distinction down to academic emergency ratings, districts would receive a letter grade anywhere from A to F in four areas, as well as an overall grade. The four areas would be student performance, which is the current performance index, student progress, which is the value-added measure, school and district performance, which is the percentage of indicators met, and our- the district's ability to close the gap, which is annual yearly progress, which is the federal measure. And I, in listening to some of these legislators, the thought essentially was that Governor Kasich was hoping this would get passed quickly so it could be instituted for this upcoming school year. And again, so I would just say that the thing to kind of watch is how quickly this progresses, because it's my, you know, I mean, again, we're at April 9th, and if you're going to create a brand-new rating system for all, you know, 613 public school districts across the state, you gotta work out what those measures are going to be, and what the cutoff points are going to be for A through F, and I just don't see in any way, shape, or form that it's going to get instituted for this upcoming school year. But we will keep everyone apprised as to how the 2,700 pages gets hashed out in the state legislature, and of course, they're not going to come back to actually even begin looking at this until April 17th, and that's, you know, we'll have another school board meeting before we actually- before the state legislature actually even looks at this stuff. So that's my update, again, I just kind of a, this is some of the things that are on the horizon, and we will keep everybody in the community appraised as to how these things move along.
Thank you. Did I understand correctly that three out of the four measures are based on the same test? It would be.
Um, yeah, perhaps, because again, you know, the value-added, um...
Yes.
But by, and I brought this, Sunday's Columbus Dispatch, which I've become a fan of picking up the Dispatch, the banner headline of just yesterday, "Harder Tests Equals Fewer Passing", and the Dispatch essentially does this article that says that only four in 10 students with the newer, tougher state tests that are coming in, only four of 10 would have passed. So not only are we getting a new, I decided not even to bring this up until you mentioned that, because I didn't want to try to confuse everybody. Not only are we going to get a new student test, but we're going to get a new district evaluation system, and, you know, so, and again, when these are instituted, we'll also be, you know, up in the air, but again, from what I saw in talking to and hearing from the state legislators, they're in no rush to get this through, because they realize that there's an awful lot of education policy changes that could be forthcoming with all these proposals.
My point was simply to take one test and make it count for three out of the four areas, just doesn't quite seem right.
You could make an argument that even closing the gap is using the test.
Yeah, so then you're, you know, so then it's one test for all four areas. I mean, that's crazy, because when you're trying to judge a student's work in a classroom, you look at multiple things, not one thing, and say, okay, now I'm going to give you the grade for all these subjects based on one test, but it's the state. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mm-hmm.
And then, do we have a student liaison report?
Yes, we do, Madam President. Just another highlight of some of the special things that go on at our school district, but in particular, what goes on at our high school. And students enrolled in Mrs. Michelle McGary's Advanced Placements Physics class at Euclid High School recently visited Case Western Reserve University to compete in a civil engineering competition. This competition involved the construction of model bridges made entirely out of balsa wood. And if anybody knows what balsa wood is, a very lightweight, has a less, a lighter density wood. But despite the model bridge construction being a regular part of our AP Physics curriculum, it was the first year that Euclid students actually participated in this competition. The model bridges were tested for load capacity, creativity, and workmanship. Bridges constructed by our Euclid students were able to support between 30 and 95 times their weight, which is actually pretty good for, you know, a first-time civil engineering project. The research and high degree of rigor required to complete this project aligns with the new Common Core state standards, and will most certainly prepare these students for college. This competition showcases how Euclid students are competing with the best students in our region, and we also have a video to go along with that.
I'm Michelle McGary, and I've been teaching AP Physics here at Euclid High School for 17 years. It's a great program. We have been teaching the mechanics seat, so we're gearing students to go off to college and become engineers and computer scientists, and really enter the college classroom well prepared.
If I would have took this class in college, I don't think I would have learned as much, because it wouldn't have been, I wouldn't have been able to ask as many questions, or have like intimate interaction with the teachers.
Last year, I took chemistry. I never took regular physics, or honors physics, or anything, so when I came here, I was kind of new, but she told us all of that. She said, if you keep up your work ethic, and you keep up everything, then you should do good in the class.
This particular project that we did was balsa wood bridges, and we have been making these bridges for years, but this year, we decided to take our project down to Case Western to the civil engineering competition, and our students did phenomenal.
It was really fun. It was great to see, like, everyone else's ideas, and see how everyone held up.
I had a lot of fun. It was, it was a great opportunity for me since I became aware of going to Case Western.
It was like really time consuming and hard, because sometimes I had to hold the pieces together until it dried.
It took me a long, long hours.
Altogether, it took about maybe a full day.
It was, it was enjoyable, but it was long.
So you glue like three things, and you have to take like an hour break.
Our bridges are judged by their load capacity, so their load versus their weight is what we are looking for. Creativity, construction, workmanship takes a big part of these bridges. Our students were well-prepared, because we had already made practice bridges in class, made out of straws, and we researched all the different types of bridges before they started this project.
When we walked in, we thought our bridge was just going to snap, because compared to other bridges, they were so small.
Oh, uh, it was, I did better than I expected. I think I placed like 17th or 18th.
You get there, and you get intimidated, but you end up doing really well. It's a good feeling.
It's more about constructional design than just being bulky or heavy, because they'll just snap, and they don't have any give to it, or any kind of physics-related design.
Along with your creativity, you also have to be, you know, smart, you have to think about the physics, how your support works, and it just took a lot of thinking. My bridge actually wasn't designed like this at first. Had to take it apart a few times.
It is really, really good. I have 95, which was pretty much good.
They did great. They ended up having loads anywhere of 30 to 95 times their weight, and I believe that going down to Case was a great experience for the kids. It showed them what other students are doing, that their work is credible, and shows them how they're going to maybe apply that later in life, different projects they might come across in college.
I definitely have fun in physics, and I look forward to the things we do in here, the labs, the projects, so, yeah, definitely college prepared.
It's a nice, still-good piece, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you very much. Okay, move on at this point to any visitor comments relative to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll go on to report some recommendations in the Treasury, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you. Item made as a resolution to approve financial data as submitted to the Board, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 9 is a resolution to amend appropriations and amend student activity funds as submitted to the Board, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And item 10 is a resolution to accept a, an anonymous donation of $5,000, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments, other than the name, because you can't find out?
By may add, this, this donor has donated before, and previously, we used their funds for starting the high school debate club, and it's our, these funds come with no restrictions, and it's our intention to continue to use these for the debate team. This will cover their operating costs for the next two years.
Okay, good.
It's great.
It's great. So we thank them very much, and they will get a thank you note from you.
Yes, it is.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes my report.
Okay, and we'll move on to report some recommendations of the Superintendent, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Ho. Items number 11 through 20 are personnel-related, and Dr. Seligko will represent me in these matters.
Thank you. Item 11 is a resolution considering the educational program reductions and additions for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Do you want to?
Few comments? Yes. Just wanted you to make note that in the deletions, many of those program reductions are a result of consolidation and attrition, as well as the, one difference here would be the, the music that you see there, the reduction of 1.7. You will most likely see an addition of a .7 music teacher back on at a subsequent board meeting. We're still playing with those numbers, but it's, it looks like it's going to be, part of that is going to be reinstated. As for the additions, again, it's a result of consolidation and reorganization, with the exception of the speech and language, which is really based on need, and that's a very small add. The current person that we have now is .875, and so we're going to make that position whole.
I will also point out that any changes related to Title I are not on this, this resolution, because they will be proposing that at the next board meeting on the 23rd.
Not the next one, but the next.
The next.
Special meeting.
Regular, yes, regular special meeting.
Supposed to the special, special meeting. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 12 is a resolution considering classified program reductions for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes, this too is a result of consolidation and reorganization, and we will be adding, again, in a subsequent board meeting, the cafeteria additions and deletions. So those you don't see here, but we're still working on that, and that will come, that will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 14 is a resolution considering the certified staff for the 2011-2012 school year, with one exception, I ask that we will be pulling off the extra duty assignment, and I recommend approval for that.
It's the last page of the resolution.
Very last.
Will we be seeing that at a later date?
No, we will not.
Okay.
Can you restate that with the change in what we have?
Okay, and in Resolution 14, we'll be pulling off the extra duty assignment, so it's on the last page there, right before 14.
Oh, there it is. We will leave her on with that.
Oh, actually, okay, it says it up there.
So we will not be taking action on that tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, was there a motion?
Oh, did we move?
No, actually, I...
Okay, sorry. You started talking, and we didn't get it moved, okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second.
Second.
And I'll go by Mrs. Lysy. Okay, now we can call the roll.
I have a couple more comments.
Oh, you have more comments?
Yes, I just wanted to explain the pool, okay. We have a number of retirements in this resolution, and I would just like to list those people this evening. We have Linda Besbina, who is a reading recovery teacher at Upton, Teresa DeBroy, who's a math teacher, Patty Fiorito, who is a teacher at Lincoln, Beverly Howes, a family and consumer science teacher, Karen Boyle, math, Darlene Fifick, who is at Forest Park, Jane Addis, an intervention specialist. We also have Dave Saywell, our union president, who's here this evening, will be retiring this year, and our very own Dr. Jones, we will be accepting his retirement this evening, and Judy Daniel, who's an intervention specialist as well. And one other note, then, is we have some substitute administrator, administrative positions taking place, and Mr. Sharaba, who's here, and you'll be meeting very soon here, will be taking over as a substitute assistant principal. Mrs. Knight will be out, so Mr. Felito will step up to the principal spot, and Mr. Sharaba will finish out April 16th through the rest of the school year as the assistant principal interim there. And also, we have Claudia Spencer in for Mrs. Obradovich, who's here also this evening, and that is set for May 4th. We'll see how that goes, right? Okay. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, res- or, excuse me, item 15 is a resolution considering the certified staff, non-renewal of contracts for the 2012-2013 school year, and these are temporary one-year positions, and so these people knew that they would be non-renewed at the end of the year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeAngelis.
And one more comment here, we have, you will see the name, Alondra Davis, she's an intervention specialist at the high school, and in Resolution 19, I will be recommending her approval. We are going to hire her full-time as an intervention specialist as well. Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions from the Board? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 16 is a resolution considering classified staff for the 2011-12 school year with one note, one noted change, and that would be the change in the retirement date for Donna Sherman, and we're wanting to change that date to May 30th.
That's on page three of the resolution.
So it was June 30th, and we want to change that to May 30th.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Call the roll, please.
I think we need a motion again.
So moved.
Were we on 16? Okay, sorry, I marked it down, but wrong one. Okay. Okay, we've got a move by Mr. Smith, and seconded by Mrs. Lysy. That's what happens when you try to do two things at once. Now we can call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 17 is a resolution considering classified staff reduction in force, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy.
These are our usual layoffs that occur with our non-union and our educational assistance. Happens every year, and what we do is we reassess our need, and then in June, we rehire most of the people back, if not all of them, and that will be based on need and performance.
Thank you. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 18 is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second. Okay, and seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 19 is a resolution considering certified personnel for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy.
Okay, couple comments here. One, first off, Ms. Alondra Davis is one of the appointments that we were recommending, that I had mentioned earlier. And secondly, I'd like to introduce you to some potential new prospects here as assistant principals. We have all four of them this evening, which is very nice, so we have our new and current assistant principals, and so if I may just read a little bit about each one of them, please. Stephanie Boka, if you would stand. Stephanie received her bachelor's degree in education from Cleveland State University in 2001. She received her master's degree in educational administration in 2011 from Ursuline College. She has been a teacher with Euclid City Schools since 2001 as a special education teacher. So Stephanie, if there's anything you'd like to share?
I am really appreciative of the opportunity to work with students and families, and I'm just pretty excited about it.
She's going to be at Shoreview.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, next, we have Frank Sharaba. Frank will be the assistant principal at Bluestone, and Frank received his bachelor's degree in elementary education from John Carroll University in 2000. He received his master's degree in education from Cleveland State University in 2005. He's been an elementary teacher with the Euclid City Schools since 2000. So Mr. Sharaba?
Yeah, I'm just very honored and privileged to be the new assistant principal at Bluestone. I think it's going to be a great opportunity. I'm just looking forward to working with a great leader in Lynn and I, who has a lot of experience, and it's just an exciting time, and you, the next year, the new school's going up, so I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
And as we noted earlier, Frank is getting a jumpstart on his career, beginning next week at Shoreview. I mean, no, at Upton. I've got to a point where I'm saying the new school, so easily, but at Upton, so it'd be an interesting way to begin.
Next, we have Mrs. Bridget Cements, and Bridget will be the assistant principal at Arbor. Bridget received her Bachelor of Arts from Cleveland State University in 1986. She received her Master's of Arts in Speech Pathology and Audiology in 1988 from Cleveland State University, and her Master's of Arts in Educational Administration in 2010 from State University, and her Master's of Arts in Educational Administration in 2010 from Ursulon. And she served as the principal at Indian Hills. She currently serves as the principal at Indian Hills Elementary School. Break, Ms. Cements.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity of being principal at Indian Hills this past year. It's been a huge learning experience for me, probably one of the most rewarding years of my life. Cars twerking. Years of my life as well. I'm very excited to be the assistant principal at Arbor next year with Kathy Cavetti. Walking through the buildings and our walk-through tour, like I talked, I think I told Dr. Jones, I have to envision walls, but naturally see it in 3D. But it's very exciting, and I'm looking forward to the challenge of all the changes in the future next year. Thanks.
And lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Felito for coming this evening as well. I know he's a familiar face, but I wanted to see him with our new group here. And Mr. Felito has been serving the Euclid City Schools for over 25 years, working in various teaching and administrative capacities. And he'll be the assistant principal at Chardonnay House. So, Mr. Felito, thank you for being here. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, I'm very excited to continue working in Euclid. It's been very exciting to work in Euclid. I'm very excited about the new buildings and looking forward to working with the new colleagues who will be joining us. It's very exciting to see a team of eight people who can come together next year as we move into the new buildings and provide with the new common core. And all of the things are changing at the state level as well. So, thank you for your continued support.
And thank you for stepping up just the remaining of the year at Upton. Thank you for doing that.
Good luck to all of you. Thank you for coming.
Okay. That's 19.
Yes.
I bet they're right. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Call the roll, please.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And item 20 is a routine item, considering the certified personnel rehires for the 2012-2013 school year. And I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
I have to abstain due to the fact I have a family member listed here.
Motion carries four zero, want extension.
All right.
Okay, thank you, board. Item number 21 is a resolution considering the approval of the Career Technical Planning District Cooperative Agreement from 2012 to 2017. And I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes, we have been part of the Lake Shore Compact since its beginning. It includes Mentor, Willoughby, Eastlake, Wickliffe, and Euclid. It is a great relationship we have with those three other cooperating and collaborating school districts. The presentation of this particular version of the agreement has no substantive changes in it from the previous years. But it is something that we do have to pass every five years, which is why it's not listed as routine, even though it is sort of a routine thing at this point.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a comment. My daughter is privileged to be part of the visual communication program. And it is outstanding opportunity for children to become artists. And it's also kind of a nice collaborative effort going on between all the different kids and all the different schools. So, they all feel like Euclid kids when they're here. So, it's kind of nice.
Good. Is there one of the components at one of the schools for any medical training?
Yes, but we're having, we're struggling with that because the enrollment has dropped to a point that, well, there's a medical services, nursing services is at Willoughby. And the actual need for nurses for several years has been down. It seems contrary to
Everything you hear on the news.
Logic. And therefore, the enrollment has gone down. We're giving it another shot at re-enrolling kids for next year. But if not, then next year will be the last year for the medical, the nursing services. We will have, hopefully, replace it with a medical-related services program, which is more flexible.
Yeah, I mean, everything you hear on the news is that they need more medical people. And so...
Right. It does seem, but we do those studies, and that's where the changes have been. But again, I just read recently how the Cleveland Clinic is looking for hundreds of new nurses now. So...
Do you think it's because they're not actually graduating with a certification?
They don't graduate with a certification. That is part of it. They still need two more years of school.
Maybe there's another field that they can get certified faster in or something that we might need to look at. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 22 is a resolution considering participation in the Ohio Schools' Council Waste and Recycling Program for their services from July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015. And I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
We've been participating in this, and this is just a renewal of the agreement.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis. This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
I would point out, I should have pointed out before the vote, it wouldn't have made a difference, I don't think, in the vote. But this is an example of shared services that regionally, you know, with the Ohio Schools Council. It's one of the many programs we participate in. Resolution number 23, or item number 23 is a resolution considering the authorization of summer school 2012 with the appropriate, with the approval of fees as well. And I recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
The fees are no change from previous summer school. And this is a program which is a, is no financial obligation by the district because this is a self-sustaining program based on enrollments. If we don't get enough kids to run a class, we just don't hold the class. And Janice Swoboda will be the principal this year.
All right. Are there any questions or comments?
Just that we should point out that there's a middle school program and two different secondary programs. And the dates are June 11th through July 13th for the middle school. And the two different sessions of the secondary would be June 11th through June 29th, and then another session that is July 2nd through July 20th.
Right. And the students all have the 4th of July off.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 24 is a resolution considering proclaiming Euclid Reads. And I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lizey. We'll give her a turn.
Okay, thank you. I'd like, as customary, I'd like to read the resolution into the minutes. Be it resolved that whereas the Ohio Department of Education and various professional organizations, including the National Education Association, International Reading Association, National Council of Teachers of English, American Library Association, and the Parent Teacher Association acknowledge the importance of reading as essential to lifelong learning and encourage the sponsorship of reading celebrations by design, designating the following. April 2012 is National Poetry Month and School Library Media Month. April 8th through 15th, 2012 is National Library Week. May 2012 is Get Caught Reading Month. May 7th through 11th, 2012 is the 35th Annual Write to Read Week Celebration and the National Children's Book Week. And whereas the Board of Education acknowledges the primacy of reading in all subjects and at all grade levels throughout the entire year, now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education declares Euclid Reads in the Euclid City Schools in conjunction with the National Poetry Month, School Library Month, and the Ohio Write to Read Celebration, and encourages activities and events in all buildings to highlight literacy education.
Any questions or comments?
I will point out that Euclid and Parma have been the two school districts consistently engaging in Write to Read Week celebrations over the many years that we've been doing this at K-12, which is a great honor for us.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 25 is a resolution considering the approval of the fee schedules for the 2012-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
We do have two moderate increases to explain to the board. One is for Culinary Arts II, the Senior Culinary Arts Program. Change in fee from $115 to $120. And the postgraduate transcript fee for those who have graduated already and are requesting transcripts, official transcripts from the district from $3. But all other fees remain the same.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 27 is a resolution, no, excuse me. Item number 26 is a resolution considering the approval of out-of-district field trips, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
Mrs. DeAngelis will give you that one.
Comments? These two trips are actually both related to the Career Tech Program, Career Technical Education. This year, we have two students who qualified for the Business Professionals of America national competition. Once again, this year, it's in Chicago, Illinois. They will be accompanied by Mr. Pignatello. The two days of school will be missed. April 25th through 29th are the dates of the trip. And the second trip is a competition for, at Hockin College down in southern Ohio, state competition for one student and one chaperone. Three days of school will be missed, April 17, 18, and 19. So that's next week.
For the culinary arts.
For the culinary arts student.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 27 is a resolution considering proclaiming Administrative Professionals Day, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
If I may, I would like again to read this resolution into the minutes. Be it resolved that whereas the dedicated secretarial staff of the Euclid City Schools helps to assure the smooth operation of all buildings and departments throughout the district, and whereas administrative professionals are recognized throughout the nation during National Administrative Professionals Week, April 23rd through 27th, 2012, now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education acknowledges its secretarial staff by proclaiming Wednesday, April 25th, 2012, as the Euclid City School District's Administrative Professionals Day. And I might point out that as administrators, we are all greatly indebted to those who work with us every day so closely and anticipate our needs as well as what needs to be done in their jobs throughout the district.
And I'd just like to say, even though we don't, as a board, don't have an administrative professional, we appreciate everything that they do because they get us our work on time and keep us organized and make sure we fill out all the forms we need to fill out. So we appreciate them. Okay, call the roll, please.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 28 is a resolution considering proclaiming National School Child Food Service Employee Appreciation Day, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
If I may, to read the resolution into the minutes. Be it resolved that whereas the unselfish work of the food service staff in the Euclid City Schools assures the district of meeting the daily nutritional needs of the students, and whereas an attempt is being made throughout the nation to acknowledge cafeteria employees during the month of May, now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education acknowledges its cafeteria workers by proclaiming Friday, May 11th, 2012, as the Euclid City School District's School Child Food Service Employee Appreciation Day.
Don't say that too many times fast.
No. That's a difficult one for some reason for me.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions?
Will the students be made aware of this?
Yes. They will now.
All our students watch our board meetings.
That's right.
Pacific lessons.
It'd be nice if they said thank you as they went through the lines. Okay. Call the roll, please.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Just making my little note here to mention to the principals. Item number 29 is a resolution considering an acceptance of a donation of 26 office chairs from IMG Worldwide to be used throughout the district, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments?
No, we will thank them appropriately on approval of the board.
And then they, these are chairs that you've looked at, or someone has looked at?
Mr. Higley and his department have looked at these chairs. I dare say they've even sat in them perhaps. Okay.
And made sure they worked. Okay. Call the roll, please.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Ho.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 30 is a resolution approving a grant proposal, a ETEC grant proposal, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
I'm going to read what this grant is about, but I'm actually going to have Mr. Lizey make a brief presentation because it's a little bit different than we have had in the past. This grant is in the amount of $130,000, being submitted by Ted Lizey in collaboration with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County. If approved, these funds will be used to purchase technology for students to use in a blended learning course and provide professional development to support the development of a framework for creating blended learning experiences in our district. So, Mr. Lizey, if you could enrich that description for us. And I believe you have the PowerPoint presentation that you're doing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a presentation here to talk about this blended learning. It's very timely. If you watched 60 Minutes, I believe it was two weeks ago, there was a special on a website called Khan Academy, which is a tool that a lot of teachers are using today to do what's called flip their classrooms. And that is a, it's another word for a blended learning environment. So we're going to talk about that and how this grant proposal is supporting that. So, as Dr. Jones mentioned, this is a grant proposal through ETEC, the State Technology Agency. And to give you a little background on online enrollments, this is K-12 full online enrollments. And these could be online schools such as ECOPT, or they could be enrollments in public school course offerings. So if a public school district was offering AP Spanish fully online, this would reflect that. In 2001, there were 45,000 students enrolled in these online classes. In 2010, that number reached 4 million. It's been projected that in 2014, we will breach the 10 million students nationally enrolled in full online courses. Now, this is not inclusive of blended courses. It may have certain components online and certain components face-to-face. So, as you can see, students are flocking to these types of experiences. And they're very, very engaging. We have some students right now who are enrolled in different online components of courses. And they are very engaging. So the state goals for the grant are to obviously increase academic performance. During this grant period, the state is hiring an outside agency to come in and look at the per pupil cost of these blended learning models. The state also wants to use this as a mechanism to build capacity for all of Ohio schools. So to look at all of the grants that are awarded, pull out the best practices, and then promote those at a state level, so that we can learn from, you know, the districts that were on the cutting edge, so to speak, and do what's working across the state. And they also want to increase what they're calling, a new term out there, ICT, Information and Communication Technologies. So, that's one of the goals. And then, obviously, the expansion of online learning. So those are the goals of the grant. And they have set forth and identified different blended learning models. And what I'd like to explain here is that this is really a spectrum. Face-to-face driver is one end of the spectrum, and online driver is the other. And the face-to-face is essentially, a teacher may be teaching a class and have traditional learning experiences, but may have some of the content in their course online. So they may put homework assignments up online. They may put a discussion board up online, so the students can interact with it or have access to it outside of the regular class period. That's one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is the online driver, which is essentially, everything's online. The instructor's online, the content is online, support mechanisms are online. Everything's online. So that's the spectrum of learning So, that's the spectrum of learning models that they've identified. What the state will be doing will be funding one grant for each of these models. So, it's a competitive grant, and they'll be funding one grant for each of them. So, the details, once you're funded, they will have two years of funding. The first round of funding would come May of this year in the amount of $80,000. You would have two more $25,000 deposits to the district in December of '12 and May of '13. There is a 25% professional development requirement that you would be providing staff members that you've identified as the individuals working through creating this blended learning environment, and you would have to spend 25% of that on professional development for them. Again, it is competitive. There was a letter of intent that had to be put in by April 1st. There were 92 schools in the state that have applied for these funds. We are one of them, and six will be funded. So, it is a fairly competitive grant. And if you are chosen, if Euclid should be chosen, we would also be subject to review, and they would continue to review us through 2017 to look at sustainability and look at those best practices again of the grant proposal that we've established. So, Euclid's proposal, one of the things that we found most beneficial in submitting proposals like this is establishing some partnerships. So, as Dr. Jones said, we have partnered with the Cuyahoga County ESC to provide some content and professional development to the teachers to create this framework. We've also partnered, one of the first times we've done this, we've partnered with another public school district, South Euclid Lynnhurst. They are actually going to be taking their grant proposal and writing it for eighth graders, and we're writing ours for essentially ninth graders. So, hopefully, after the year of funding, we can share our ideas and work at blending those two together. We've also partnered with WBIZ to help provide us with some technology professional development, and they are all in and have been part of the planning process thus far. We are looking at that flex model, not either end of the spectrum, but right about in the middle. We looked at some data that showed that 24% of our students last term failed physical science the first time they took it. What that means is a student can take physical science, A, again, but we are looking to provide some supports for when the students take that class the second time, having that content delivered in a different manner. If they didn't get it the first time, the last thing we want to do is give it slower and louder. We thought it would be, this would be a great opportunity for us to look at some students who really need content delivered in a different way, a non-traditional way, with some more supports. They can view the content at home with the technology, we'll share it with you in a minute, and then have the supports of the teacher as they begin to apply those concepts and that content in the classroom. So, it's practice with a coach, if you will. We really feel that this is going to change instruction, but the most important part here is that instructional framework. We want to make this scalable, so we want to look at what are all of the components when we're talking about creating a blended learning environment that would make it successful? Not necessarily what technologies have to be in place, but thinking of all of the things that you don't think of, so to speak. You know, if you send students home and you say, "We need you to watch your lecture for homework," well, what if they don't have the internet? What types of things can we build into our framework to make sure that that's something we think of as we're planning out the course? What if a student comes to class and hasn't watched the, because we know that some kids don't do their homework, not many, but some, don't do their homework? So, how do we account for that when they're going to be spending their time with us doing the practice and applying that content? So, those would be the kinds of things that we're constructing in this framework. That framework could then be brought over to another course, like an English or like an Algebra I class. So, we're trying to create some sustainability with that framework. I thought this is a very brief video. It's about two minutes long. It's a gentleman that has flipped his classroom in science. So, I'm going to let him tell you about exactly what that's like.
I'm Aaron Sams, and I teach science here at Woodland Park High School. My ultimate goal, I guess, as a teacher is to help students become learners who can learn for themselves and by themselves. One of the problems that I was guilty of even prior to flipping my classroom around was the classroom was centered around me. I told them exactly what to learn, how to learn it, what assignments to do to learn it, and when to learn it, and how to prove to me that they learned it. I don't do that anymore. We changed the plates in which content is delivered. Instead of standing in front of a class and delivering, "Here's how you do this type of problem, here's how this works," I deliver that direct instruction now asynchronously at home through these videos that we make with Camtasia Studio.
Times till whole.
Oh, we didn't do that last time.
Because the last step, they were already whole numbers. We had 1, 1, and 4. Here, we don't have a whole number. So, here's a few little tricks when you need to multiply by whole numbers. If one of your numbers ends in .5, you're going to multiply by 2.
Something .5 times it by 2.
Right.
Okay, write this down, guys.
Yes, if something ends in .3 or .33 or .66, you multiply by 3.
And when the kids come to class, they don't show up to learn new stuff. They show up to apply the things that they learned at home and to ask me questions about the things they learned at home. So, now they could have my lesson, if you will, what I would normally have stood up and lectured to them in class with some added features. They get that at home. Then what they were expected to do for homework is now what they do in my class. Life is different for me because I no longer am the guy who stands up in the front of the classroom and just yacks at a student for an hour or however long the class is. Now, I walk around the class and I help kids. I'm a tutor, I'm a guide, I'm the putter, outer of fires, whatever it happens to be in my crazy chemistry class, I walk around and do that. I don't stand up front and teach under the kind of the traditional model. I'm Aaron Sams. I'm a teacher. I'm a dad. I'm a husband, and I love Camtasia Studio.
So, as you can see, that concept of a flipped classroom is a component that we really want to try to build into something that we can offer students, especially as a pilot in that physical science realm. It's clearly an area of need. We have plenty of students who need more support when it comes to that, and what better way, you know, to provide them with much more support than have them practice with a guide on the side and review the content when they're at home? Another advantage to that that Mr. Sams didn't talk about was that you can't stop a lecture and rewind in the middle of class. If it's on a video, you can go back and you can listen to it multiple times. So, lots of advantages that we've identified in the state, and research has identified in these blended learning environments, and we want to try to leverage that for the kids in Euclid. So, one thing we wanted to do, we really tried to focus on here, was answering the right questions and avoid that baby Einstein effect. If you're familiar with the baby Einstein videos, that parents would show their videos, I guess they were, they've been around for about 15 years now. The research, the initial studies that came out said, "Well, the parents that were showing these kids these videos, these kiddos, you know, were doing really well in school." So, what did everyone do? They rush out and they buy baby Einstein videos. 10 years later, what they find is, no, it wasn't the videos at all that had the effect. It wasn't the program or the tool, but what happened was these parents who were looking for something to do with their kids were doing other things. They were reading with their kids. They were interacting with them. So, we want to stick away, we want to stay away from identifying one tool or one thing that we feel is a silver bullet, and what we want to do is look at, under what conditions have to be in place to make this successful? And that's what this grant is about. It's not about saying blended learning is going to fix everything. It's saying with blended learning, what things do we need to identify to put into this framework so that we can make this sustainable? So, and again, it's not looking at the tools, not what we buy with the grant funds, but what can we do systemically to support all the teachers and students? So, those are kind of the two big guiding questions that we're going by with this grant. One difference Dr. Jones alluded to a bit is part of the new Ohio Revised Code is that to submit this grant in two weeks, we have to submit to the board what's called an innovation plan. They don't really outline how extensive this plan has to be. This plan does not have to be approved by the board. We just have to have a plan in place. There are innovation criteria that we have in our state-approved technology plan that we're currently pulling out. We will use our vision from that state-technology plan, and we will have to explain to you as a board in the plan what types of implications this could have on current policy or the contract. You know, this grant, it's not systemic yet. It's just a pilot. So, as we see it, there aren't any, you know, major changes that it would have on policy. But when you look at putting the technology in the kids' hands a year from now, we may have to adjust our technology, our acceptable use policy to allow those students to take the technology home with them. So, it would be little things like that that we need to do. So, you will be seeing that over the next week or so, that draft innovation plan is what it will be titled. Timeline of the grant, May 2012. We feel we were very confident that we will be awarded that grant and begin the work. Fall of 2012, we will begin developing that framework with the help of WBIZ, the Educational Service Center, begin drafting the curriculum for implementation, and the winter slash spring of 2013, and that will be our pilot implementation, and we will begin evaluating from that point. So, that the external evaluator will be coming in, providing students with surveys to take, asking the teacher or teachers who may be taking on these courses to, you know, respond to those surveys. And then, in the fall of '13, we would have a full-blown implementation for those, for select courses that we have for that to examine it and continue evaluating it. So, that's the timeline of the grant. Again, $130,000. Very, very excited. I think it's a great opportunity for the students at Euclid High School. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, this is great. Especially, they're doing this, my nieces go to school in Pennsylvania, just outside of Pittsburgh, and they, their classroom is doing the flip partner, or what do you call it? It's the flip model or the flip lessons? And what they were finding is, especially in the math and science classes, kids were becoming so frustrated with their advanced mathematics and their advanced science classes, and parents were not able to help them. So, when they started, when they flipped, they were able then to get the lecture at home and then really concentrate for an entire 45 minutes on what was mostly needed, which was just helping them get through the problems or the reactions, their chemistry reactions. So, I think this is great. In the grant-writing process, you said that there's WVIZ and South Euclid Lynnhurst. Are they actually going to help assist in writing the grant, or are they just going to be writing letters of support? Will we actually be able to get some assistance from them?
No, they are actually, South Euclid Lynnhurst is writing a separate proposal for another one of the models. They're using, they're writing their proposal for the rotation model.
Okay.
So, it is actually two separate proposals, but we partner in hopes that the state sees that as kind of a connection
Right.
with a lot more scalability at a much faster rate.
They tend to do awards more frequently when you do those types of partnerships. So, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Very good. Questions?
Yeah, are the six different categories, is that the slide that you had, partnership, flags, physical science?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, there are seven. There are seven. Face-to-face driver, rotation, flex, there will be seven awarded. And we're choosing flex. South Euclid has chosen the rotation.
Can you explain just briefly what those are?
Yes. Again, the face-to-face driver is online learning that's deployed on an as-needed basis. The rotation is essentially a fixed schedule where maybe one lesson per week may have an online component. Maybe there's an online quiz or online discussion. The flex model is actually, most of the curriculum, it's that flip. Most of the curriculum's delivered online, which allows you to do more support in the classroom. The online lab are programs that provide all of the instruction online, and you have paraprofessionals or other people there to supervise that instruction online while the kids are there. Self-blend programs are students choosing to take online courses as a supplement where they, you know, we may not be able to offer, and it's usually in addition to their current course load. And then, again, the online driver is full-blown online, online course.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I ask some other questions?
Sure.
I'm wondering, I mean, it does certainly seem like, you know, an interesting and perhaps even compelling way to teach kids science. Is there any, but it's also fairly new, and so I guess I'm wondering whether or not there's any scholarly research that supports any of these six types of, you know, new learning models?
Yes, there's, the state actually requires, within the proposal, requires you to, based on research, of what components within an online environment have demonstrated the highest yield of success for student learners. Without these, I believe there are 11 different components, and one is, you know, how do you support, for example, Mr. Smith, a student who, when you're trying to engage them in discussion online, which is a typical component of an online course, what do you do if that student's not responding? How long do you wait? And having those criteria spelled out and training the instructor to realize that when you're building an online course or an online components to a course, you know, how do you build those supports in? Again, this is back to the baby Einstein thing, you know, what conditions? There's no real silver bullet in regards to what model is best, but with each of these seven models, those criteria really have to be spelled out, and that's what we're working through right now with the proposal.
Much of the research in this, the scholarly research on the flex model, which involves a flipped classroom, is emerging.
I would guess.
Yes, and the Khan Academy has been around for a couple of years now and has been an exciting development for school districts as well as for individuals. The Khan Academy, you could Google Khan Academy, K-H-A-N Academy, and he has a whole array of coursework that he's been added to. He has no charge for it, but it's being, seemed to be an exciting way to reach students who are not otherwise engaged. One of the reasons we have selected physical science as the coursework to start with, where students have already failed the coursework, is to try to demonstrate with a group that maybe has been less successful in a traditional matter, in a traditional manner, to engage with science in the technological realm. But again, the research is emerging.
And, you know, just if you would go on, like Khan Academy, YouTube, there's such a need for instructional lectures, and I think it was, this all sort of stemmed from the need. There were so many students who may not have quite understood the content matter during their class lecture and then would go online using a search engine to sort of figure it out, and so they're spending additional time at home, not work before they can even engage in their homework. So, so this, I'm just so excited about this. I'm just so glad that we're going to go ahead and submit this grant, and I really think we'll have a good chance at this.
We hope so.
Yeah.
I saw on the video that a lot of the kids were using the iPods. The kids all know how to use the iPods, and that's just another way of getting their technology and their learning in. I think it could be a win-win for everything there. Like, but would eventually, would the children who are like the high achievers who don't want to sit through a regular class, would they have the option of participating in classes like this?
Yeah, again.
But starting, I know, starting, they love it. Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what we want to, we're shooting for with this grant, is to try to identify that framework that we can then apply to any course that we would, you know, that we would have that option for any course.
And this does not eliminate the need for the teacher. It changes the focus of what the teacher does.
Right, changes their role, right. No, I think it's a win-win. And a lot of those students who do very well in particular classes can fast forward or just skip over to the particular part of that lecture that they need the most concentration on, so, yeah.
Especially too now, a lot of colleges are offering so much online versus, you know, to get their degrees, it's almost an introduction to what's coming in the future for all these students.
Good transition.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, one other comment. The emerging research is kind of what I would expect, because again, if this is a new style and a technology-driven style of delivering instruction, obviously, there's not going to be a lot of research out there to support it. I mean, I go back to, I mean, I authored some predatory lending research in 2000, and, you know, one of the things I ran into, because it was my, it was the exit thesis I did in my master's program, and one of the, you know, pushbacks I got was, "Well, there's no scholarly research to support this." So, I understand that we can do something and not have emerging research yet supporting it, and it can still be a good idea, it can still work. I am concerned that with how this would affect a high-poverty population, which is just to say that for some of our kids, the best part of their day is when they're in our building, and the challenge for instruction becomes after they leave us, either due to extracurriculars or needing to work a part-time job. And my concern, and that's just, I would want us to be cognizant of the non-cognitive challenges that our students might have, because it just strikes me that this would be a very compelling part of their life, and they would want to do this. I mean, I can just see, you know, really engaging some kids, but the challenge is, are they going to be able to, you know, have their personal life managed in such a way, perhaps not due to factors of their own, but external factors, that they're going to be able to watch a video, you know, consistently every night a week? Because if you miss three videos in a week, you know, how do you dig out of that? And that becomes the challenge. So, I'm in no way thinking, this is, none of this comment, none of these comments are to suggest this is a bad idea or we shouldn't pursue this. I think it's a great idea, and we should pursue it. But I, but again, the reason why I asked the research question is just whether or not this had any, you know, how had, how had students in a high-poverty population worked with this particular style of delivering educational concepts?
Your point's well taken, Mr. Smith. And what I can tell you is that in a district that is high poverty, what we are compelled to do is seek opportunities that bridge that, that technology gap that may, that may be in existence in a high-poverty district, and this is one avenue to do that.
Yeah.
It brings in technology and opportunities that may not, may not be there for us, that we may not have the latitude to do without a grant opportunity such as this. And to build on the research, and we're hoping that we will be part of that initial research and be, you know, very much like your predatory lending, where we can be right in from the get-go.
I almost think that our students might really be successful with this type of model. I think that our students tend, just from what I noticed, just being a math and science tutor, just based on my own personal experience, that they are more likely to get that homework done or engage in problem-solving when they have somebody next to them encouraging them, telling them, "Yes, that's correct, move on to the next step." Where at home, it becomes very frustrating and their frequency of giving up, if left to themselves to try to accomplish this and not being able to have the support system of their parents to help them with it, or nobody else who understands those types of problems or those reactions, I seem to think they would be more likely to watch a 30-minute lecture at home and then be very engaged during classroom with their peers and their teacher to get the bulk of the work done in a 45-minute session. So, I think it might actually work better for our students.
And Mr. Lysick did mention that there would be a provision to provide the opportunity for children or students to watch the video at school if they have failed to watch it at home.
Sure.
To get, make sure they get the lecture proportion of this.
I think it sounds really exciting and wish you the best of luck, because that will certainly make a difference, I think, in students' lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did not vote yet on that.
We did not.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Roll, please.
Mrs. Lysick.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Soudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry is five zero.
Thank you, and I do have a few remarks for the superintendents informal. And Mr. Higley needs to pay close attention to the date, because this is a change in which we had discussed before, to set aside Monday, April 16, which is next Monday, as our next facility is
our next facilities update.
It's 7:30?
7:30.
Okay.
Okay, as the board knows, we have arranged celebrations for UPSN, TJ, and Roosevelt before they're demolished, as a reminder for the public at home. UPSN will have a celebration of the community on May 9 from 6:30 until 8:00 p.m., and members of the community can come and see the schools before they are demolished. Roosevelt has two sessions, one is May 17 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., as well as May 24, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thomas Jefferson, May 24, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Now, we did try to avoid duplication, but there are so many events that have been happening in May that include me, or things like academic awards night, commencement, and you as well for that, and scholarship nights and other things of that nature that we were not, as well as the elementary school events, we were unable to avoid that, but we do have a wider window for Roosevelt so that we can get to both, if you're wishing to participate in both, at Roosevelt and Thomas Jefferson. In addition, we've scheduled Saturday sessions on May 5 and May 12 for the community to come to do for two purposes. One is to take a tour of the old buildings if they wish to, and one is, the second purpose at the same time is to have a tour of the new facilities and see what their status is. The dates there would be May 5 from 9 to 11 for Chardon Hills, and of course, Chardon Hills would not involve a tour of Glenbrook. May 5 from noon until 2 Arbor and Roosevelt. May 12 from 9 to 11 Shoreview and UPSN, and May 12 from noon to 2 Bluestone and TJ. So we will advertise these dates in the Euclid Observer on our own website, to inform the city, and the news outlets via press release so that we can really get this word out. It's very difficult without this, we've often opined about the loss of the Sun Journal, so we are missing that, but we will get the word out in a number of ways.
Hopefully, the News Herald will, you know, make some articles.
They generally are very cooperative. And notifications were mailed on Thursday, April 5, informing elementary school parents of their new school assignments for 2012-13. We had planned to get them out by the 30th of March, but we had a little bit of a disconnect with some of the special ed assignments, and we didn't want to create a problem with having notified people improperly relative to transportation. So those notifications went out, they will have received them Friday or Saturday this past weekend. So we anticipate some questions from parents, but if you have questions, just direct, if you get questions, just direct them to us, and we'll answer them. And that concludes my informal.
Thank you. And that includes the students who participated in the lottery for Chardon Hills.
Yes.
Okay. I've had questions on that. All right. Do we have any communications or petitions?
We do not.
Any new or old business?
No.
Is there any board members informal?
I have a couple things. First, I'd like to thank everyone who helped raise about $13,800 for the Euclid High School Council PTA Scholarship. We were really pleased with that amount of money, and there are lots of, lots of people to thank, and I don't want to miss any names, so I'm just going to do a massive thank you to people participating on the committee and those who attended the event, as well as corporate sponsorships. We had $2,000 of corporate sponsorship this year, which was a really great, great thing. The other thing is, this Wednesday, April 18, from 6 to 9, is the Senior Art Show at Euclid High School in the auditorium. So for anybody in the community that would like to purchase art or just view the art of our senior artists, it's a great event. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I neglected mentioning that, that's a great event. I have much artwork on my wall.
Mine helps too. And I always get the artists to sign them. I always, when I purchase it, I always put a little note to please sign, because you never know. You never know.
Well, most of them do sign them.
At this point, are we opening up to any visitor comments? Seeing none. The board does need to go into executive session for personnel and also for a student hearing or two. And the only action we will take will be relative to the student hearings, and there will be no other action taken, so you're free to go home. At this point, I'll take a motion, wait a minute, I gotta see, because there's, yeah, this one. Okay. Enter closely, I'll give it to you. Read that for the motion. Take a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee as provided in Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Lysick?
That was easy. You had heart.
Follow the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysick.
Yes.
Wishing carries 5-0.
Okay.